At this time, I'll take the roll call. Commissioner Bias.
Here.
Commissioner Carlson.
Here.
Commissioner Hapala.
Here.
Commissioner Jerkerson.
Here.
Commissioner Perrell.
Here.
Commissioner Scheller. She's not here. And also, our planner, she's here.
Yes, here.
Okay. And the first thing we're gonna do is on the on the agenda, we're gonna be looking at the approved amendment of tonight's meeting agenda, October 26, 2021. Somebody like to make this motion?
I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Jerkerson made the motion. Somebody want to second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Perrell seconded. Any discussion? See none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next thing will approve the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes for July 27, 2021, and August 24, 2021. Somebody like to make this motion?
Make that motion.
Commissioner Carlson made the motion. Commissioner Jerkerson seconded the motion. Any discussion? See none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. The first thing we're gonna do is open the meeting him to do with a concept review for the Borg lot split, 5763 Verdi Valley. A two-lot split requiring a flag lot, cup, and a variance for a lot width. So we're gonna turn it over to our planner at this time. Have her present what she has.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, for those of you that know, this is the Halfes property. It had a history of some animal issues, but Mr. Halfes passed away and the property got purchased. And Mr. Borg has actually cleaned it up a ton. If you haven't driven by, it looks much, much better than it used to. He says that the existing house on the site there is in really good shape, and he's fixing that up. And then, his plan would be to split the lot in two if you feel that that's the best route to go. And it is 10 acres in size. And when I looked at the density calculations for the area, this is how I do it. I parcel off the 40-acre quarter-quarter sections and count parcels. So like, this is the property here we're speaking of. And then this is, this parcel, for instance, already has eight units per 40, so that would, there can be no further subdivisions in that quarter section. But the quarter which in, within which the Halfes property or Borg property is, currently only has five parcels. But these two small ones are owned by the same owner, and so technically, this little tiny one is not buildable. So they really should combine those into one parcel. Anyway, so there are additional units available in terms of density. So going back to the site plan, there was a little bit of concern that right here on the site, there might be a little wetland. This could be a little swale that comes through here. But even so, the state wetland law has an exemption for crossing wetlands with, for a driveway purpose. So that maybe would be possible there. This for sure is a wetland up in the northwest corner, and maybe a little bit up here possibly. This blue line shows the flood plain. And this on the adjacent parcel here, or I guess two houses over, there's a house at, to the east, and then there's one right on the river here, the creek. They cannot even get to this back portion. There was some question whether this would be, could be a developable lot here. It's kind of a high point. But this property owner that owns the house along the creek actually has his gardens on the Borg's property. And I'm not sure if this does get inundated or not, but anyway, so we can look at that when we get the wetland results back. I just don't see how you would get a street in here unless it were platted, and you had to put a cul-de-sac in here to get three lots or something. You could possibly get a third lot, but this property owner, Mr. Borg, talked to him, and he was not willing to sell any land. So the question is, would you be open to this flag lot with the 33-foot easement, or not an easement, but an access? And then, this parcel would have the variance for lot width. We still meet the lot size that's required, and the density. These two pole barns are really not worth keeping, I'm told. Plus, they're, neither of them meet setback. So that is the question tonight. And there's already a flag lot to the north here, and Mr. Borg also spoke with that property owner who was not interested in accessing from the north. So they are kind of stuck. Kind of fenced in by the surrounding area, lot splits. I did want to, well, Mr. Borg's not here, but for his, for his purpose, I, this is the National Wetlands map, which sometimes is not super accurate, but this is that wetland that does show up on that. And here's one on the very northern border that might be, show up. And then, this is the flood plain. The floodway is indicated in the stripe, and then the flood plain, which is like 100-year level, comes up this high. And then what I did is I put together some aerial photos. For, like, if you look back here to 1985, it looks like it was a wetter year, because you can see the dark areas in the soil. And this too, where this, this is a little fuller wetland in 97 versus 2020. It looks pretty dry there, and this wetland's, you know, pretty well-defined within its boundaries. So the question is kind of right in here, where that driveway crossing may require an exemption. He was saying that he was kind of worried about that, and I said, well, it's pretty common to have this exemption, or ask for an exemption. So when we look at flag lots and the potential, they require a conditional use permit, and there's a list of 13 conditions that they must meet. And it has to be a dead-end situation, which this is, and without potential for extension of a street, since the flag lot is typically kind of a, you know, creates a dead end or difficulty with future subdivision. But if you think it's reasonable, we could tell him he could move forward if he chooses to. Otherwise, he's stuck with his 10 acres. But I think the 33-foot access is reasonable, given the proximity of the house, and kind of leaving the most space from the lot line to the home, existing home. As opposed to requiring a 66-foot cul-de-sac or something. It probably wouldn't even be feasible. You probably wouldn't get your money back out of the lot, you know, if you had to build a road. Although you might get a third lot if you platted, because then you can go down to two and a half, but you may not have the density that you need either. So you, second thought, you probably would be stuck with just two lots here, since you need the five-acre average. So if the neighbor's not willing to give up any land, yeah, you can't get any higher average than that.
The app that he chose not to come in the later?
Yeah, I thought he might show up, but he didn't, he didn't tell me he wasn't coming.
You'd think of he wanted, he'd be here. He owns all this land now?
He owns the 10 acres.
The 10 acres, okay.
Yep, that's all one parcel.
And that's a lot of record now, the 10 acres?
Correct, yep.
Question?
Ms. Commissioner Perrell.
Was he aware that he'd lose his agricultural, by splitting this? He'll lose his ag possibilities?
Yeah, I don't think he, under our current ordinance, it's not even considered ag, because he's gotta have 20 acres to be agricultural. So even if he, I mean, he can still hay it if he wants or something, but yeah, he, I think he was gonna split it for his daughter or something like that, and then sell the front parcel.
So his request is for a variance in the front lot then?
Well, you need a variance here for this lot width.
Yes.
How wide is that lot?
It's only 200 and...
192, if you take the 33 feet off.
That's what I was trying to understand here. We didn't have a definite...
I don't believe it's 300 the way it is now.
That's what I was, that's what I was understanding.
Is it 290, 292, isn't it?
292, I think, yeah.
292, now.
Is that what it is right now, without splitting, and it's 292, you said? Because that's where I was confused in this information. Says 232 frontage on Verdi Valley, is that, is that the whole lot width, right now, 10 acres?
Yeah, he's got, I know he's got less than 300 right now.
Okay, because that's on page...
Oh, 232, yes.
Yeah, so 232, okay. So we are, we are, okay.
So you'd end up with just 99 feet of street frontage when you're done.
Yeah.
But with that house, the way it is, he does meet both side yard setbacks.
Yep.
Is there a house sitting on there now?
Yep, right here.
Where?
Right there.
Oh, right there, okay, doesn't really show it. Oh, yeah, okay, it's big.
And on that second parcel again, can you go back over what, what part of that is buildable, according to the surveying? That is?
Yeah, this is all high and dry here.
Okay.
This is a wetland back here, this little swale thing, and then possibly right in the corner. But this is a nice knoll here that overlooks the creek.
But that makes the other guy's property line not in there too.
Right here?
Yes.
Yeah, he can't get to his property from this side. But Mr. Borg approached him and spoke to him about, you know, subdividing or the potential here. But he can't access it from this, from Verdi Valley.
He can't at all?
So it's kind of landlocked. This is all flood plain. He may be able to put a driveway through the flood plain, but there's a house here, so until, until that were removed, if somebody built up on the knoll. But all this is wetland in here, this whole lot.
Is there a current variance for the lot width?
No, I'm not sure how it ended up that way, but it's probably quite an old subdivision, yeah. It appeared back to the 70s that it was this same configuration. So I don't know if there were different requirements then, or if they just, this, yeah, may have happened a long time ago.
There is potential for that back, five acres, they have two lots there?
Well, they meet the density requirements. The only variance, yeah, is the slot width, and then a conditional use permit for the flag lot. So if you feel that it's, you know, this is a, for a variance, you're looking at whether or not there's practical difficulties involved regarding the shape of the parcel, which it is a kind of a L-shaped parcel. And the frontage situation wasn't caused by the current owner. So you have to look at whether it's a reasonable request. You know, would another 10-acre parcel in Nalan be allowed to split into two fives? Yes. So then you have to look at reasonable access. And we do allow flag lots under our city code per a conditional use permit. So as long as he can meet all those conditions, which I believe he does. To see, you know, the actual survey and the special use permits would come back, come back to you. Those would both require public hearings.
I am concerned about the, over on the right, eventually if somebody comes in here and they want to do some billing there, what are we gonna do to, because he's landlocked too, and the landlocked, we're gonna have to do something with that.
I believe I measured that at just under an acre.
Was that all this?
Yeah.
That's not very big, I'd say.
I think it was like .8 or .9.
According to her ordinance, it's not, they're gonna make a lot off, maybe.
Well, I mean, he would, you can include wetland in a lot.
Okay.
As long as that's buildable, but then you've got the setback from here too, so. Mr. Borg, you know, if, if he had to provide street access to that adjoining lot, then I'm sure it would not even happen, because he wouldn't build a whole cul-de-sac for two lots, and then just to provide access to the neighbor.
Well, it looks like he meets our ordinance on everything. It's got a hardship, there's no question about that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if there's any other way to allow or get access back there to that neighbor without...
Actually, if there's not?
Without building a road, but we only allow one, one flag lot per subdivision. Well, plus, he doesn't own it yet, but if you ran the driveway up the other side...
He'd still, he'd have to go across the...
You'd kind of run into a steep slope here, but...
That should have really been all part of that 10 acres to begin with.
Right, yeah, exactly, Harold, it wasn't.
Because it's just a waste right now. And we as a governing body are, now in itself, would be smarter doing that, because you'd get taxes off of it.
Right, mhm. We had a couple.
Now you're gonna, you may just sit there as an unsalable piece.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, when Brian's Bend was subdividing along 47 there, they had some landlocked parcels, and we made them move the lot lines, so that, you know, that the contiguous land was all together. Because, yeah, this situation doesn't benefit anybody.
Worse than that, you know, if somebody knows that that's a county-owned or city-owned, you might have deer hunters that you didn't ask for back there too, and whatever, you know.
Yeah.
But it's just a good idea to put everything you can on the tax rolls.
Because that guy don't want to budge, there's not too much we can do about that.
So the variance criteria for lot width regarding, would the variance be in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the chapter? Yes, I believe it would. It meets side yard setback, and the house, you know, the front setback wouldn't change at all. He would not, you're not increasing that non-conformity. The plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. The purpose of the variance is not exclusively economic. The granting of the variance shall not alter the character of the neighborhood in which the parcel is located. So there's no more density here than there would be, you know, in this neighborhood to the west. The requested variance is the minimum action required to eliminate the practical difficulty. So under our flag lot ordinance, we do allow the 33-foot access in a dead-end situation.
It says it's not possible in the first five acres, they could build back on it. Little knoll back here, right, right, for the five acres there?
It's not possible here, you mean?
Yeah, they have these 300 feet, no, down in the first lot, right in there.
Oh, to build?
Yes.
Yeah, somebody could build there, but this house would have to go away first, the existing one.
Yeah, there's an existing one. Oh, okay, I keep forgetting there's a house there.
Yeah, this is a nicer building site, if you ask me. But he doesn't want to take care, take down the house. He says it's a decent house.
And what was the, oh, come on, the wetlands passing through with the driveway?
Well, it hasn't been delineated yet, but this would, I told him that this was questionable in terms of wetland, whether it will be or won't be. But there is an exemption that the state allows to cross with a driveway. They make an application, and they can fill up to a small amount, which I think is like 1,200 square feet or something, to cross a wetland with a driveway. And we've had quite a few of those approved by our wetland specialist.
Okay.
So he would have to demonstrate before we would approve the, the split, that he could get access back there.
If he was required to make the access wider in order to try to divert, to divert some of that wetland there, how far over can he actually go until he's too close on the lot line for his actual current home?
I don't understand. You mean like how wide of a driveway can he have?
No. If he had to make the easement there more than 30 feet, 33 feet, how far over to the east can that property line move before it's encroaching into the setbacks of the home?
Oh, I see.
Or any outer buildings, do we know that?
Well, this is shown to scale, so this strip here is 33 feet, so we, I'm guessing we have about 40 feet.
Okay.
So are you thinking you want to have a 66-foot?
Well, that's, I'm wondering if it would benefit him then, because then he could get around some of that wetland, but I don't know, I don't know based on that, and I can't tell based on this information in front of me, so I didn't know.
Well, and I think that you could always decide that later. Plus, I think that the wetland kind of goes all the way across, if it's there.
Yeah, that's what my concern is, and that's why I'm wondering if making that easement there is gonna be, if he needs to make it wider, if there's room. And that's what I was wondering.
Well, we'll wait and see, we'll have to wait and see what the delineation looks like if he proceeds, and then we would have to make that judgment call.
Right.
Because if he finds out, yeah, that he can't get across there, or he exceeds the de minimis, then he has to buy wetland credits to fill, which is a more tedious process. So it sounds like you might be open to it? We don't really need a formal motion or anything, but just sort of a...
I'd say he has to check into it and get all the answers before we can really do a final decision on it, because we...
We have to know for sure, yeah. He's got access, right?
Yeah. No point in going through all the processes if it's not even possible.
Mhm.
So...
And his biggest problem is to be able to get across that wetland there.
Probably so, yeah.
Yeah, if it's wet.
Okay. Well, we'll see if he wants to go forward. Any other comments on it?
If he chooses not to go forward, do we still require a variance? Is there any danger of letting that go without a variance, even if it's not split, since it's not meeting?
No, we consider this a non-conforming lot.
Okay.
And there are many of those out there. There's two, two more here right next to him. So I'm guessing, yeah, this was split.
A lot of record.
Quite a long time ago. So no, it just goes on to exist that way, and we don't want to increase the non-conformity.
Right.
If we don't have to, but, so it's kind of a balance between that and your property rights regarding splitting. So, you know, is the one lot reasonable? He's not trying to get, you know, four lots out of here, which he couldn't anyway, but...
Just so he's aware, he could, he's got some other alternatives.
I can't tell based on this information in front of me, so I didn't know.
Well, and I think that you could always decide that later, plus, um, I think that the wetland kind of goes all the way across if it's there.
Yeah, that's what my concern is, and that's why I'm wondering if making that easement there is going to be, if he needs to make it wider, if there's room, and that's what I was wondering.
Well, we'll wait and see. We'll have to wait and see what the delineation looks like if he proceeds and then we would have to make that judgment call.
Right.
Um, because if he finds out, yeah, that he can't get across there, or he exceeds the de minimis, then he has to buy wetland credits to fill, which is a, a more tedious process. So it sounds like you might be open to it. We don't really need a formal motion or anything, but just sort of a.
I'd say he has to check into it and get all the answers before we can really do a final decision on it, because we.
We have to know for sure, yeah, he's got access, right?
We, yeah. No point in going through all the processes if it's not even possible.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And his biggest problem is to be able to get across that wetland there.
Probably so, yes.
Yeah, if it's.
Okay. Well, we'll see if he wants to go forward. Any other comments on it?
If he chooses not to go forward, do we still require a variance? Is there any danger letting that go without a variance, even if it's not split, since it's not meeting?
No, we consider this a non-conforming lot.
Okay.
And um, there are many of those out there. There's two, two more here right next to him. So I'm guessing, yeah, this was split.
A lot of record.
Quite a long time ago. Um, so no, it just goes on to exist that way and we don't want to increase the non-conformity.
Right.
If we don't have to, but. So it's kind of a balance between that and your property rights regarding splitting. So, you know, is the one lot reasonable? He's not trying to get, you know, four lots out of here, which he couldn't anyway, but.
Just so he's aware, he could, he's got some other alternatives.
Yeah, I mean, we could require sixty-six feet going in here. But then it would get quite close to the existing house.
What is the sixty-six feet bias?
Well, that would allow for a future local street.
Okay.
So if someone decided in the future, you know, maybe he acquires some of that land or you know, maybe they build a cul-de-sac later. I don't know. So that's one option.
But that would have to be tarred all the way back in there or not so?
Yeah, under the current city code, it would have to be tarred.
And how many feet does that? When you start talking dollars and.
Right, that's what I mean. It wouldn't make monetary sense to do that.
You gotta put all that together before you start off and say, we're going to do this.
Well, and this is why we like to ask for conceptual layouts of properties before we allow a split when we're looking at a big parcel, because then we don't end up with funny remnant pieces like this that you can't do anything with and that are not tied into the local street system.
How big is the lot, the flag lot to the north?
Uh, I believe that's just a five.
Okay, there's nothing that could be done development wise.
Right, there's no further splitting to the north, right? That was a good question. Okay.
In other words, just gets, he's asked to get a lot of information before we have to really consider.
Yeah, he would have to do his homework before he submits the, the lot split application, right?
Okay, is that enough information?
Yeah, that, that's great. Thank you.
Okay.
So moving on to the architectural standards.
Yes, present what you've got there or?
I don't have any slides for the architectural stuff.
We have the prints, so.
We've got handouts. So, some of you are coming into this a little bit after the fact. Um, but the gist of it is the council directed a study of architectural standards for commercial industrial properties. And I included the photos of our existing buildings, or most of them. Um, so sort of, um, we have a niche right now and now then where we tend to have um, little bit smaller businesses, kind of more startup businesses, maybe just, you know, out of, they're too big for their residential property. Um, but recently, well, we have a new one going up on forty-seven, as you know, that's quite large. Uh, but the lots in this local industrial park were smaller, so they were more limiting. Uh, the new lots on forty-seven are a little bit larger, so there was some um, talk too about colors, um, about blue. The blue standing out too much, or, um, you know, we want to keep everything earth tones. And, um, it's, I've read before that when you're looking at a big massive building, the earth tones kind of blend in better with the surroundings rather than a, um, not, not, non-earth tones. And the building doesn't appear as massive as it might be. Um, the other thing is breaking up the, the plain sides of buildings with windows or columns or different roof treatments. There's lots of things we can do. Um, so I took a stab at some basic requirements that popped out at me as far as changing the ordinance. It's just a first draft. Uh, we can get way more detailed if we want to, but we have to also be careful that if we're putting it in the ordinance, then everybody's going to be required to meet that. And the only way to vary from it is to ask for a variance. So we have to be sure we know what we want. I think we need to still allow a little flexibility in the types of materials, um, but if, for instance, we like buildings with, uh, maybe all buildings need to incorporate some type of a roof pitch, maybe they can't just be a flat building. Maybe the warehouse portion can be, um, a tip up or something with a flat roof and then the office portion or the facade is got a peaked roof. So there's lots of different things we can do, and it does, does or can get fairly detailed, but um, like I say, this is just draft one and um, also kind of going along, what goes along with architecture is the site design. And we actually have a, a pretty good ordinance regarding parking, for instance, where we require our parking lots to be screened. We don't want to see our parking lots from the street. Um, all new parking lots have to be curbed and, um, with concrete and then have either asphalt or concrete paving. Um, and loading areas also have to be screened from the street, have to be in a more conspicuous location or inconspicuous location. Um, and so it's a little harder, um, because our downtown, if you want to call it that, is on a main highway, two main highways, you know, with higher speeds. So we almost need to create that frontage road situation, and we do have a frontage road plan that's part of our comprehensive plan. But if the frontage road doesn't exist or can't be acquired in some locations, um, I was talking about how the parking lots should interconnect, and they've done that well down here by Bills. Um, they have kind of a cross easement agreement between the bank and Bills and everybody along Viking there. Um, we just did, um, adopt a change to the accessory building ordinance, uh, earlier in the month. Which allows some, in, I guess mostly, well, it could be commercial areas, but mostly residential, allowing a building in front of the home, which has to coordinate with the house versus um, right now, what the larger pole style buildings can be um, metal and can just coordinate with the house and they don't have to match exactly. So as, as we get more in tune with kind of the way we want our city to look, this is when the, uh, more detailed ordinance standards come into play. So we already had established, if we start on page one of my ord, draft ordinance, twenty twenty-one oh six, um, I've added a couple of definitions at the top, just based on what I was reading. Um, just clarified the purpose section of the building type um, to state that architectural and aesthetic compatibility with surrounding properties is always at the forefront and, um, that all buildings shall contribute positively to community image with regard to design, architectural style, material quality, visual aesthetics, permanence and stability. I just removed the kind of negative connotation there regarding deterioration. And then, um, added as one of the general provisions that all commercial industrial uses shall coordinate site and built elements into a unified design, including architecture, parking lots, pedestrian and bike access, environment, the utilities and signage. So, uh, everything needs to coordinate and potentially be, if we want, you know, one site to coordinate with the next, we can set it up that way. Now, we don't necessarily want everything looking the same. And it's a little different here because we don't have like a little local downtown street necessarily, where we have, um, I guess more pedestrian mobility. Here, we're focused on, um, vehicular mobility. So, and looking at these businesses as you drive by more from a distance, right? So we still need to kind of keep that and, and take that into consideration also. So the material standards on the start of page two and going into page three, those have already been established. Um, I just made a little revision on page three under the wood stating natural or composite. There's a lot of composite wood products now uh, that are very attractive and longer lasting and easy, more easily maintained. And then moving on to page four. Regarding exterior material colors, um, commercial industrial uses. Commercial industrial uses shall utilize exterior material colors which are primarily earth tones and shall blend with or complement the surrounding area environment and landscape.
Questioned?
Yes.
Um, was this, um, I guess you guys discussed this last month and I wasn't here, but, um, why are we pushing for earth tones?
Um, I guess because that's what the direction has been with the council, um, and.
That's what the council's asking for?
Uh, just in some respects, I believe that's been the discussion. Um, there's been some dislike of a couple of the blue buildings we have. Um, but um, I don't know. What is your thought?
Well, my thought is, is that as a business, if I wanted to have a blue siding on my building or red, yeah, why can't I? That's probably part of my color. It says in here, as far as the next part goes, it said something along the lines of neon and fluorescent, which I understand and I get that, trying to be, because that can be missed up, missed and overused as part of a advertising and signage. But as far as the earth tone colors, I feel that that's constricting and I, I'm actually not for it. Because I feel like a company, if they want to build a building, blue, purple, that helps attract clients to their building. And you drive around any city and you're going to see a bright orange one. It's probably a hall or some sort of a rental place or a storage place.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, it's not my choice of colors. I, I don't have a problem with it.
Right.
Um, I don't want someone to walk up to me and say, you can't have a pink house, if I wanted a pink house, so I'm kind of just wondering why we're trying to restrict the commercial and industrials.
I think it's a more coordinated look, sort of a unified architectural look, if you want to call it that.
I get that.
So you can incorporate your colors, maybe your trim is orange, maybe your signage is orange. You know, it's a, it's.
And all those parts still could be, if it's, building isn't used for its purpose any longer and it was sold, they're paintable. So that's where I'm like, why are we constricting this?
Yeah, I don't know. Most, I guess most people have the, are putting up buildings that don't need a lot of maintenance, but, yeah, I mean, I guess you have a valid point. It's, it's all what the majority wants to see and what you want your town to look like, right?
Yes, yes, the blue building, um, what was that, outdoor storage and small houses? Was that, was it was? I forget.
Mm-hmm.
I think, yeah, it's, it's unique. It actually gets people's attention. I think that was part, the point of the, part of the point of building that building. It got attention. It got people to talk. Why take that away from an owner of a building that's going to be paying a lot of money in their revenues and their taxes to our city? I guess I just, I'm a little bit, you might say emotional on this because that's part of us being individuals. We want an all-black building. Why? You know, I know it's not my thing, but I know it's out there.
Well, the, the single sloped roof over there on two hundred first. It, they did that actually, it, it was more of an environmental thing.
Yep.
It had a water collection system and all sorts of things, but at any rate, um, yeah, I mean, this is, we're here to discuss it and to.
Well, that's, I wanted to discuss that.
Which, which buildings are you talking about?
Um, the tiny home building.
Which one's the tiny home? Is that the Hallburn?
The blue building on the far end? Yes, Hallburn.
I think it looks terrible. I think it's a nicer for our community. That's my personal opinion. I don't know how we were loaded.
I, I think some of this earth tones come in when, you know, we've switched over now. You'll see a red house, there's one down on Ferry Street. And a lot of those real bright ones are really nice and pretty the first few years. And then pretty soon, you know, that thing starts to fade. And just about all of your earth tones, you can't detect it if they do, because they pretty much match what it's about, you know, the environment. The grass at one point of the year and then later on, the grass gets brown and of course, and that's where part of that comes in, because you'll see a great deal of those real bright ones that just don't hold up real good. And, um, I haven't, haven't seen any that, that lasts real good, but I know that one on Ferry Street, right? You go down across ten and you'll see a red house there. And that one has really faded out under red now.
It's painted.
And it was, yeah, you can paint it, but who wants to keep painting it to keep it bright, you know?
Well, when, you know, when Josh came through with his storage place, there was discussion that blue was a earth tone because it matched the sky, so what about red? You know, you've got like, we have a couple or three, maybe even three barn red.
But see, not many of your earth tones are that bright.
Yeah, the bright red is different than like a barn red, but.
And that's where I think some of that come from. And I'm not saying that there, it's a bad deal, but I think that's where we kind of got started on that and it, it, you know, you, you don't have anybody that's got an eyesore out there, is what it most.
The challenge also is, is tastes change, right? I mean, it wasn't too long ago avocado refrigerators were in style. So, you know, we, you say, okay, we're doing earth tones, twenty years from now, does our city look dated? Because everything's in earth tones and now everyone's doing black and white, doing different things. Do we then say, hey, everyone needs to update their look? I mean, it's cohesive, maybe it's, they all kind of look similar, but taste change. So at, you know, at some point, do you say, okay, we're going to update the code to match the current taste, and how often are we going to do that? Are we, are we making more work? But, I mean, I understand too, because I've, yeah, I've been through some towns that look very disjointed and junky, but but at the same time, it's their property.
When you go through an Amish town, right, you always see a, a white house and a red barn. That's only two colors they use. And you can always tell who, which one they are because they have no electrical wires to them.
Right.
You know, I can see things in like Maple Grove where they have that section. Where they're like, okay, we're going to go for a look in this section that makes sense. But to kind of put it broadly into the city and say, no matter where it is, whether you're tucked into the industrial zone or you're on Viking Boulevard, we want the same look. It doesn't. On Viking Boulevard, we want the same look, it, it doesn't make sense.
Another thing that quite a bit of our siding now is becoming vertical siding instead of horizontal. And some of your big builders down in, uh, Corcoran and below down there, I get down that way three, four times a week. And I can see the difference in it and, I'm not saying it's all good, but it is different, it catches your eye, you know?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to bring some attention out to that, so we'd all think about that differently. And yes, even directions, like he said, of siding, horizontal, vertical, um, there's a lot of products out there. And if it's made, if it's available in that color and it's not an off-the-wall special order that they have to like make. I don't see why it's a question to us, why we shouldn't even consider it. So, I mean, they have like a burgundy purply looking, you know, siding, which is unique, but there's someone out there that's gonna love it.
Well, here's another question is, okay, so they come through the city, we approve their plans, they build according to the earth tones we want. You don't need a permit to paint your building, so they build it the way we want and then they go paint it. What recourse do you have at that point?
You're out of, you're out of compliance with our codes, we're gonna write you, okay?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, something to consider.
Is the intention to conform kind of, I mean, it seems like we're just sort of picking a, a path to conform from one spot to the next. Whereas a bright purple building isn't gonna necessarily conform with the earth tones next to it, you know, I mean. How many bright purple buildings do we have out there, right?
Right.
So, um.
So.
Is it just a matter of maybe putting in the conformity to the, the space and the environment around it?
I think it's kind of a cohesive look. Um, now, you know, we don't have a lot of his historic buildings that are worth keeping. So, we're kind of starting from scratch, so we kind of just wanna spell out in more detail, what do we want, you know? Maybe, um, you know, maybe just high quality is, is the way to go. And if you like roof pitch versus no roof pitch. But, you know, we, we do have some flat roof building or a couple of them are nearly flat, but not, not necessarily flat. But, um, I see, and I don't know if that's a factor, but. To me, it's more important to have details like not having a blank wall. And incorporating maybe a porch or some columns or an attractive entrance, you know? To me, that's more important than the color, but. You have, the ordinance requires some of the higher quality materials like brick and stone, which are typically earth tones. There's a, you know, a ton of paint and siding colors, but. You know, like A and B's got a green roof, is that, is that an earth tone? I don't know. So, we would need to somehow define what an earth tone is. Kelly, you got it?
Yes.
Yes, hi.
Commissioner Pearl.
Um, along the lines of what you were asking, yes, I, that would be number three under this exterior materials. Um, and number four, I'm gonna kind of pack both of them. Uh, oh, and, and number two, I guess, up to three accent colors, I think that's, I think that's fair. There's not too many, um, buildings, companies that are gonna go too wild and have more than a total of four colors. Uh, on their building, which then is up for, you know, getting into discussion of, okay, the stone has how many colors in it? Okay, we are, now we're splitting hairs, but, um, then number three, the color accent considerations for, you know, other items. Um, stone, wrapped windows, shutters, piers, all this other stuff, yes. They, they are accents to an outside of a building and can be added at any time. And I believe that that is something we should probably focus a little bit more of our information, our, our details on here. Versus telling someone what colors they cannot have. Um, and I do agree that, yes, there's, you know, you don't exceeding at a certain percentage. Um, and then natural, the natural concrete color, um, trying to avoid the, too much of that. Just cause it, it does need to be sometimes painted to maintain its, uh, best look over the years. So, that's just my thoughts on a lot of the stuff in working in the field and in the industry myself.
So, you feel that limiting color is kind of like limiting style? And you don't wanna squelch that, is what I'm just saying.
Commissioner? Yes, Mayor.
Just to, to bring some background to it, when this started out, it had everything to do with primarily our commercial districts, those along the main streets. You know, as, as you drive east of us and go out towards thirty-five, you can come on some very. Incompatible or, or oddly configured building arrangements. So, part of this had to do with dock locations, door locations, landscaping, and what do we want our main street to appear like and the uniformity? It, it got into some of the colors and things because some of the people that were looking to put in buildings here. Have a, a defined, um, basic color scheme on the type of product they'd be bringing in. Which lends itself to that disjointed look if you go through some towns that are randomly built. And so, the, the initial conversation was about the commercial district. When we, when they looked at a moratorium, Planner Stockman said, we should look at, at all of our industrial buildings as well. So, there's still some distinction that, that could be made, say, in an industrial park, here's the type of things we're looking for. We, we like what, what was done over here, the Curtis Building, the, the MBI. And they did some beautiful buildings and very creative things, and they mixed their colors in well, but it's primarily earth tones. You know, the MBI is part commercial, part industrial. So, part of that discussion is, do, if you wanna have something different in the industrial, let's have that discussion now. The uniformity or the coordination is what we're looking for on the main street. And so, when, when bills came in, they expected some architectural standards. Because they had the Pine River State Bank there and they assumed, like many of the Holiday Station stores when you go up north, they have to have stone and wood and. In, in greater Minnesota, the holiday stores don't look like the ones in, in Twin Cities. They look like something that's up north, and so when Pine River came in with the, the log cabin type, well, the assumption was. That was gonna be the look up and down Main Street. When bills came in and they went to the architectural committee and nobody had any idea, they said, we'll just build this. Now, bills is changing there somewhat because they're trying to modulate, because they're starting to get out in greater Minnesota and they're realizing. They kind of like what they're being required to do out there, and so their newer structures are not quite as bright as what they have over here. But that's part of it, is to, to take a look and say, what does your main drag look like coming through for people that are passing through the community? How do you get it to just not be a box store of this type and a box store of that type? And have, you know, this red design and, and this plain gray design and these guys got his loading dock out front. So, part of that was, you know, where do you want your loading docks, where do you want your trash bins, where do you want your entrance, how do you want the street face to look? So, that's really part of what Liz is putting together here. You know, we're kind of hung up on the colors right now, but it's what does it look like when you're passing through town and what's the uniformity? What kind of, of, of berm might you have? That doesn't block them from, from people seeing what their business is, but doesn't just look like a big parking lot from as far east as you go to this. Far west in the commercial district, it's just a big blacktop. So, part of that is landscaping, the, the appearance, what's the front of the building, what's the back of the building? As you go down to the new school they just built on Nalston Boulevard, they put their loading docks out on five. The front of the school is around to the south where it faces the neighbor residential. But the trucks that are coming and loading are, are there where you're, you're going by, it's not a great look, I mean, it apparently worked for them. But if you're the neighbors right across the road from that, do you wanna be seeing the trucks and the garbage and all that stuff? Right on your main street when you could have had the front of the building there and that, uh, utility around the back somewhere? So, that's part of what we're looking for, what is the impression of our community when you go through? Then you can go into some of the, the coloration and stuff and say, is this that distracting? If you get the, the structural part right. So, that was the, the thought process and before our, our commercial district gets all built up, this is the time we have to say. If, if you start going out to Dollar Generals and Dollar Stores, which tend to pop up quite a bit in, in smaller communities. Then that becomes your image and you lose opportunity to control that once, once people start building. And you have to retrofit behind it. And we just, this is the time before all those commercial districts gets, get bought up and built up. This is the time to consider what the standard should be to enhance the appearance of the city while not discouraging people from building. Did that make sense? That fair, Liz?
That was fair, yes, and I do think there's, there is quite a distinction between commercial and industrial. You're not gonna see, you know, a tip-up style, they're more stick-built, um, well, I mean. Yeah, generally, I mean, we don't even have a lot of sites that are, you know. Or enough population for that matter to attract a, you know, a target or some big box. But, yeah, I would agree, it, it's how it appears as you're driving through. And if you, if you choose, let's say you are not fond of, um, very contemporary style structure. Which would stick out against all of our other, you know, standard peaked roofs. You know, we can require this two-way peaked roof or, you know, kind of gear it toward that. To discourage it, not necessarily prohibit, but, um. Contemporary structure could, with a peaked roof could still fit in, you know, with our, the rest of the architecture. Um, and have, let's say, vertical siding versus horizontal would even make it look more contemporary. But, yeah, we can distinguish between commercial district versus industrial district. The commercial districts now have to have sixty-five percent, um, grade A materials. Which are, you know, the brick and the stone or windows. Um, so they have a much higher percentage of the higher quality product than our industrial buildings do. And the building like CST that just got approved, so their front office portion had to have that higher percentage of. Um, I believe they had a type of brick. And then their warehouse part had more metal, so. We do get into those combination buildings a lot. But if they're in this commercial zone, right here is our primary, primary commercial district. And we, you know, added some land down Viking here. So, that's part of the question, how similar do we want everything to look? But I think unified is generally good, or at least similar. Similar roof lines and.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Pearl.
I do understand everything that was spoke about and I do get what you're trying to, trying to drive for. But I still believe that we should strike primarily earth tones from our material colors. It is restricting and I don't agree with it. Um, yes, we have a lot to talk about, there's quite a few pages behind all this of, to get through, but. You know, all of it goes together and that's why we're here talking about it, so. Um, getting through these colors so we can get through the rest of locations of things, I understand, we gotta get to that too, so.
Okay, and then.
That's my feel.
Were you through, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. So, I guess we're on page, we, the three accent colors. Uh, to complement architecture and provide visual variety to commercial industrial buildings, but shall not include neon or reflective. And then color accent considerations may include contrasting colors, color enhancement, tonal variations, entries. Partial walls, awnings, windows, trims, shutters, porches, balconies, columns, bandings, signs or other details. In no such case shall coloring exceed ten percent of each wall area. Um, if you give, if you get a chance, you know, drive through Elk River or at Seago and in their industrial parks. And look at those massive buildings and just kind of compare, you know, how do they look versus, you know, earth tone versus non-earth tone? That would help too, driving through other communities. So, then, so as it currently is, our commercial districts have to have sixty-five percent grade A materials. Versus, um, the industrial districts only have to have fifty percent on the side that faces the road. And then I added on the bottom of page five, commercial industrial architectural standards. Structure cell contain at least one visually significant entrance. Visible from the adjacent public street which incorporates peaked roof forms, arches, canopies. Parapets, glass vestibules, tower elements or other vertical features. Uh, commercial buildings which have ground floor facades that face public streets shall contain windows. Entry areas, awnings, overhangs or other architectural elements which are inviting to and at a scale consistent with pedestrian use. So, generally in commercial areas, we like to incorporate, you know, trails or sidewalks. And hopefully, we get to that point, um, in our downtown area. Uh, so that number two was definitely geared toward, you know, how does this look when you're walking, like so it wants you get out of your car? So, you've got the driving by element, sort of the bigger picture, and then how does it look, um, as you're approaching? And some businesses want more windows if they are more retail oriented. We have a mixed-use commercial district, so we have, we allow retail, but we also, um, allow office. And, you know, one may want more windows than the other. Multiple commercial buildings or uses shall be grouped on larger sites and coordinated amongst separate sites to create a city center feel. And simulate pedestrian activity.
You expand on that, please?
Well, if you have a larger parcel and somebody's coming in and dividing up. You know, dividing it up into lots. You know, maybe this, maybe you try to encourage the landowner to have some sort of covenants too that go along with, you know, creating. A road, like, let's say you have a forty-eight acre parcel and the road goes through, you have businesses on either side, you have trails that connect. You know, more like a, a downtown, and I envision something like that over, um, like across from. Um, bootleggers where that large parcel exists. Where you've got space to kind of start with a master plan.
How would you, how would you separate it as a multiple commercial building? Would the person have to purchase the whole entire parcel and try to segregate it out? Or is it just because it's on the same chunk of newly-developed property? What, what are-
There is, yeah, there are situations where you have multiple buildings on a single parcel. You can process that way. And they do have to be owned by a single owner under our city code, right? So there'd be like a management company, right?
Yeah.
And they may build it in phases that would allow them to do that. But it, it's also an advantage because you can integrate, like I said, all the trails or parking lots and if somebody, or, you know, if we ever get that sort of chance to almost like start over and create a little city center, that would be nice.
Can we come back to that one just because of the next couple? I've got some questions on too.
So, the other thing to say is maybe take another look at the comprehensive plan because we, the long-term goals that we've outlined in there, you know, you try to reflect in your zoning and subdivision ordinances. So we are thinking ahead in what we want, long-term, not just tomorrow. "Visual and physical links shall be established between commercial buildings through site planning, amenities, architecture, common exterior spaces, pedestrian connections, and landscaping. Large structures shall contain wall articulation."
Can you, will you back up to number four?
Sure.
Visual and physical links. What are we trying to encourage with that, with that word sort?
Like the peaked roofs or things that may connect the building or integrate it if you want this integrated look. Does it look like it fits with our city or does it not? You know, do we want that level of detail? That's something I guess the council has to decide or you have to talk about.
I don't know that that phrase is what we're looking for. It doesn't really say that in a nutshell. It doesn't refer me back to exterior aesthetics.
Okay.
Okay. Just, that's what baffled me, I didn't understand what that meant. Maybe there's a different way to reference that?
Okay. And maybe that's, you know, it's better to be more specific. You're, I mean, you're right in one way, that's a little subjective maybe, but
Yeah.
It would be hard to evaluate if we had a, let's say we had a plan in front of us, right?
Right.
Yeah, so I think maybe you're right on that one. Number five. "Large structures shall contain wall articulation." So not just a flat wall, you have projections or bays or offsets, reveals, recesses, windows varying heights or ornamentation to mitigate the scale. "Landscaping and screening shall be utilized to buffer large spanses of wall space without doors or windows." Maybe without articulation, doors or windows, I don't know.
Now, number six is also referring to industrial and commercial. In number six, the one thing that triggers to an issue would be in a parking lot on the rear side of a building. So this would say you'd have to have screening and/or landscaping on the backside of a building that no one's going to see, which we should probably interpret a little bit more clarifying that it should be on the front side only or adjacent to a public street. Just because you don't want all these things where you're going to be plowing snow, loading docks. It's just a hazard for another damage. And they, if they're not well-kept, they damage the property itself by uprooting foundations and whatnot. So number six should be a little, maybe a little clear on where it should be. Same with number five. Because if it's not showing itself to the public and it is a loading dock side, why do we want to see fanciness? They don't want to see it, it's just another thing that they can back a truck into. So maybe a little more clarification on five and six, on what side of a building? How it's saw, how it's being seen from the public eye?
Well, in some cases too, like right here, I mean, if you're in the city park and you're looking at the back of Bill's, you know?
Yeah.
Or, so it depends on the situation.
It does, that's why I said it's, it's open for-
So maybe we specify adjacent to-
Breaking down.
City or public land, roads, right? Or another, yeah, or residential, I mean, because you would, you would definitely want a screen from residential.
Definitely, just a little more specification there. It's too open.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. So looking at number four, to your point, Commissioner Pearl, the visual and physical links, we're essentially describing like a common architectural style that kind of goes between building to building?
Yeah, or even, you know, the same or similar setbacks, right? Or kind of with, with the building more forward and the parking lot either on the side or the back. So the parking lot doesn't become your focus.
Okay.
That kind of thing.
I get the word link kind of, so I just started thinking of like sidewalks. Okay, so the sidewalk has to have like, oh, like they've done in various downtown areas where it's a paver stone that goes down the whole front of multiple buildings and kind of ties everything together.
Right, the city could eventually choose, yeah, a paver style or a-
But that's a, yeah, I mean, that's essentially an architectural style that, I mean, the buildings might all be slightly different, but, okay.
And that's what I, number four, I think, isn't that what we're trying to, isn't that what number four is trying to pull together? Is that even there, there are different buildings? We'll try to link them together by something common?
Right.
Okay.
Roof pitches or, yeah, the setback.
Really bizarre way of saying this, though.
Well, and, yeah, maybe there's a better way to say it. Or we split it up into walk, you know, walkway connections.
I like the idea, I just, yeah.
It does, I do agree, it has to be more specific or we won't be able to enforce it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Pearl.
I think we have to be careful about being too general or arbitrary with the descriptions. So we should have more specifics in the, in the description so you know exactly what they mean. Otherwise, if they're too general, they're not really enforceable. If you have a specific details that, like setbacks or anything that we record by this, they should be written down.
So the preference would be, in my mind, to have, yeah, the buildings pushed up toward the front setback, leaving room for pedestrian connection. And that the parking is on the side or the rear, not the focus in the front of the site, on the, you know, on the street side. If there's no other option, then, you know, you may have to, based on the site configuration, just utilize screening and landscaping to buffer. But I believe I did add that in, yeah, down-
Got to be coming up?
As far as the parking lot location. Uh, let's see here. So looking or thinking about then visual and physical links, what comes to your mind or what would you like to see? We've already said that we would like kind of interconnecting parking lots if we don't have a frontage-road situation. We want sidewalk connections. And then front setbacks would play a part in kind of keeping everything uniform-looking.
All right, is this in this section? Because I don't, I don't see where you're getting this.
I'm just kind of going back to the visual, visual and physical links and asking you then what, asking you what kind of details you would like to see without, you know, in, in, to avoid being too limiting or how, you know, kind of what degree you want to take this is, I guess, what I'm asking. Do we all like a peaked building or some incorporation of a peaked building? Or would we allow another building without a peak, you know?
Well, I look at, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Pearl.
I look at Perkins purchased, you know, they purchased the old Greenberg. And that has just a flat face with jogged tops. Behind it is the peaked building, but you really don't see that until you come up alongside of it.
Right.
So, I mean, that's visually appealing, it's been there forever.
And that's par, that's called a parapet, right?
So, and that's, that's a flat surface as well, so I just, you know, but I think they added to it.
He did put a little-
When they did some remodeling.
He did put a little porch on it.
Yeah, just to kind of cute it up, dress it up, but, yeah. But for the longest time, it was just that flat white wall.
And, you know, you could even choose that as a, you know, as a theme, right?
Yeah.
Kind of the old, older-fashioned type.
Slow slash-
Buildings if you really wanted to.
Look at what we did with the maintenance building out here, changed the looks there. Completely.
Yeah, looks good. And a little-
Anyway, even tree planting, for instance, can unify one site to the next if all the trees are in the boulevard, right? So there's other things we can do besides just architecture, but right now I'm-
So is there a section then further down for landscaping in more specifics?
Yeah, the whole landscaping section needs to be revamped.
We could probably move on and still go back to that then?
Well, I didn't get, yeah, that'll be next month if, yeah.
Sure it is.
So there'll be, this'll, this is definitely going to come in phases here.
Yes.
Any other thoughts on just kind of visually what you want to see as you're driving through town? What's attractive, what's not?
BMW dealership.
Well, that's the thing, so then, yeah, if you require parking lots on the side or rear, then what do you do if you get a car sales lot request, you know?
I, I still think of the tiny homes over there. That'd be terrible if it was right out here in our main drags.
They wouldn't have a fence all the way around it then either.
But you can see-
Because we probably wouldn't have allowed outdoor storage.
But you can see that everything over top of the fence.
Yeah, but think about it, I mean, based on its location.
Well, that's industrial too versus commercial. So he, you know, he wouldn't have, he couldn't have had the, the degree of outdoor storage.
But I think overall, our, our buildings are on the main drags, they don't really look that bad.
Which is the intention, Mr. Chair, to make sure that it stays that way.
Okay.
Before new people come in that don't have that. Start bringing somebody in who's not local and doesn't really have that, they're looking for the most economic building they can put up. And without architectural standards. That's what, when, when the owners of Bill's came in, they're used to every community they went into had more rigid architectural standards. They were surprised when they came out here, we didn't. Fortunately, Bill's builds a really nice building. And we didn't have to worry about what that looked like. But if you've seen some of the Supret-type things that used to be in Ramsey, some of those were not real attractive. If that was on your main drag, that's going to affect property values and everything else that goes up there as well. But yes, we've been fortunate.
And that's why I'm, I'm just still amazed at the Greenberg's building over here, what they did with that building. And I think it looks really neat the way it is right now.
So, does everybody like incorporating a peaked roof in one form or another? If it's just on the entry or, I guess, you're probably not going to get a flat-roofed building if you're not attracting the big, big box. But,
I like just look at the Lions Church over here. That's an example of your flat roof. And look what they're doing over there. They've had all kinds of leaks and stuff, so they're, they're redoing it. The edge, the side of this church over here. That was a flat roof. And I don't know if the pitch was wrong, because you got to, even with a flat roof, you have to have a little bit of a pitch. But that was back, was that back in the sixties or seventies when they built it?
And, and the additions they put on, Mr. Chair, obviously are peaked roofs.
Yes, the additions are. But they're going through a big expense because of that right now.
I think who's doing that now is that everything has to have a certain amount of-
Pitch.
Yep. I don't care.
Minnesota code does require certain pitches, yes?
Yes.
Because of our snow loads?
Okay, so back to number five on page six regarding the wall articulation or some details. If it's a blank wall, would be adjacent to a street or a residential district or a public, public property. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
If you're back-to-back with another commercial use and you sort of have a, you know, a rear, almost like a loading area or an alley-type thing, then it's not visible.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Do we want to define large structures? I mean, is it twenty-foot walls, thirty-foot, ten-foot?
And maybe a large,
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Pearl?
When, when I, in, in my brain, the, what comes to mind on large structures would be something over eighteen feet from the ground to an eve edge. That's like a good start for, for a large. Because most lights, stoplights and such are roughly around there. Kind of give you an idea.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So it kind of gives you a visual idea of what large would be, I guess.
And our Mr. Chair, you could also say longer than, a blank spans of wall longer than-
Forty feet, sixty feet, something like that.
Yeah, a hundred feet or whatever you want to say. You know, maybe every fifty feet you have to have a, I don't know what's reasonable for bays or articulations. No spans longer than, no blank spans longer than X number of feet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Pearl.
You could also add in the square footage of the building as part of the defining it being a large structure if it's over a certain size.
You could, but I think the, the focus there is blank walls. So I'm not sure I'm liking now the fact that I said large. You could, but I think the focus there is blank walls, so I'm not sure I'm liking now the fact that I said large structures.
It's got to have specific information so it can be determined whether or not something is large.
Right.
And, and if something is, needs to be a variance from the regulations here, then then we know when we have to issue a variance if there's a number. Whereas if it's just some arbitrary description, then anything can qualify or not qualify based on opinion.
All right, and the, the understanding is they need to meet all the requirements unless there is a variance, right? Okay, so. In number six then, I said landscaping and screening shall be utilized to buffer large spans of wall space. Would we allow landscaping in lieu of the articulation or bays? Or some combination thereof? If someone wants to just plant a row of spruce trees right along a large wall space, would that be acceptable to you?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
The problem there is typically the buildings will outlast the trees. I think, I think you're probably best looking at a combination thereof.
Combination.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I was thinking similar thing, yeah, the landscaping could be removed. And at some future point, a lot easier than you can change a wall, so. If the landscaping style changes or you want to get rid of it, they can just rip it out and then the wall will no longer be screened or broken up.
Right. You know, there's.
Yes, Commissioner.
I'm on the same thinking of Mr. Happel over there, um, that yes, the structure shall probably give them more aesthetics than the landscaping. Without due maintenance, landscaping can cause its own problems in time. So, or the structure should be built adequate.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Carlson.
So, that being said, if number five, they were large is stricken, and you just say structures shall contain wall articulation at so many feet yet to be determined, it kind of goes along with landscaping, do we just say that we're breaking the long wall sections up with some sort of physical articulation? And then in combination with six, in addition to that landscaping? Instead of a, like an O R?
Um, or my thought, you could say structures with wall heights greater than eighteen feet and, um, wall spanses longer than whatever shall contain wall articulation. And then in six, you could say up to, um, you know, up to a third or or whatever percent you want to say could, um, can be accomplished by, you know, through landscaping versus the structural. Because the structural articulation is going to add cost. And the ability to put up a metal building, especially if it's industrial, um, you know, the jogs, you don't typically see jogs in and out of a hole shed, right? But maybe that also encourages higher quality structures. But it does add costs when you're adding ornamentation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Burrow.
Um, in number five, you, you scratched the large part of it and made it structures up to eighteen feet. I don't know that we want to specify height, I think that each building might have its own little niche per se. Um, eighteen feet's really tall, I guess I was kind of going with that, it was tall, it's tall, and it might be nice to break that up with some fake facades. So I think the length of the span would be more appropriate in this scenario, to break up so many feet in betweens.
Okay. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
It could be that same building could vary six to twelve feet in height. Like this new one they're putting up over there. You see that's got quite a pitch to it, if you look at it, and on the eaves on the side, it's quite a bit shorter than what the center section is as it goes up. If you look at them big steel trusses they got putting up there.
Right. So, you want just to be, all structures have to address this?
Um, if they have a wall length more than. This building's probably forty feet.
I don't want two bigger trees because they're nothing but a pain.
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
I don't know, is fifty feet?
Fifty feet's quite wide, I think this building here is about forty. This is about forty feet here, and we've got three windows.
You're gonna have to have a pretty darn long tape to get forty out of this, this ain't no forty.
Just direct your.
That way, that's the length, but not the width.
That's what I meant, this way.
Yeah, it's probably a little over forty, that way. I got my tape missing.
Well, then get up there. What are you sitting here for? I don't know.
Well, maybe we want to just, hmm, let me think on that one. I mean, it's positive to have all the details, that's what we're looking for, so, and we would want it on the side facing the street. Or these public areas.
And most of these big commercial buildings usually have a good architect.
Right, yes.
That's a plus for us. Because if we got something skewed up, they can point it out to us.
Yeah. Right on.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, I think we should split that section I into two separate sections, not split up commercial and industrial architectural standards, so. We don't have the same standards for both areas. Industrial should be a little more relaxed.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
Need to have extra expenses on industrial buildings that are not going to be seen as much.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burrow.
Biggy back in with what he said, he's got a good idea there. We've got G and H that already are separating them out, it'd be okay to probably throw those standards up in those districts somehow.
Okay, I'll work on that for next time.
Should we move on?
Um, and then down at the bottom of six, I added a section on screening of building equipment and utilities. Uh, all building equipment and utilities, including but not limited to HVAC, systems, gas service, electric, phone, internet shall be screened from view of street rights away on all adjacent properties, whether ground mounted or rooftop mounted. Um, now I said all adjacent properties, maybe you want to, we want to go back to the streets, you know, budding streets or residential and public property. Um, although you got to screen the loading areas anyway and parking lots.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burrow.
Based on that sentence, I don't know that there's anything left for you to screen, I mean, you've kind of figured the HVAC, the services, all those really need to be in line of sight for all those people. And you don't want anything too close to them. So I think that, I think it covers it.
Well, it says screen from all adjacent properties, so my question was.
But, but not limited to. Because you don't want something in front of the electrical service?
No, that just means if there's other utilities, those would also have to be screened. So these do, so we don't want, you know, so they have to locate them, which typically, they're pretty good about, you know, side or back.
Yep.
But, you know, if, if, you might end, there, up, there's cases that I've seen when I reviewed site plans where you got a big condensing unit or something right next to the sidewalk, you know?
Yeah, or in the back of the building, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, we want those things in the back.
You just want the ability to say, hey, that has to get moved or whatever.
Yep, agreed.
Uh, electronic surveillance equipment and alarm hardware shall be as invisible and unobtrusive as possible. Required screening of refuse and recycling containers, parking and loading areas shall be regulated by another section in the ordinance.
Really? Come on now.
You know, you could do it, you know, move it.
All right, last page, um, seven, the bottom of seven, I just added under parking section. A minimum of fifty percent of all required parking spaces shall be located inside or rear yards, except when street access or a difficult site configuration necessitates a front yard location. So again, that would be maybe for a commercial zone, huh, and not industrial? Because a lot of, a lot of the employee parking for industrial can typically be in the rear yard anyway with outdoor storage area. Um, but it does have, most of our industrial buildings have an office aspect where they have a front parking lot.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
For whatever reason, my brain's, I don't know, slowing down or something. Um, parking spaces in front of the commercial, you don't want people to be going into the back, right? Isn't that what we, that's what we want, we don't want, we don't want public parking in the back, we want that in the front.
Well, parking's not that great to look at though.
No, I get that, but, so you don't want people in your business in the back either.
Well, if you, yeah.
Especially in commercial. Or, or retail, I understand, they really don't.
You know, I think it'd be more like, if you're saying fifty percent can be back or side, um, fifty percent in the front, you're at least minimizing the mass that's out in the front. You're still allowing, um, you know, easy access and handicap accessibility in the front. Um, typically, I can see like a side yard being the, the best option if we've got the space. Because then you can interconnect also between properties easier.
Yep.
But, um.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, if we look at commercial industrial architectural standards on one, we're basically saying they have to have at least one visually significant entrance, entrance visible from the adjacent public street. So we're, we're basically saying the entrance has to be up front, but, yeah, we're saying we don't want the parking there. But, I mean, obviously you got to connect that, so I don't know, yeah, I mean.
I mean, part of the parking can be there is what we're saying.
Okay.
But not the whole mass of it.
Okay. Mr. Chair. So really what you're saying is peak parking would, most parking would be in the front, peak parking would be.
Yeah, okay.
Overflow would be the side or back.
Yeah, right. And I think that would apply just to commercial, don't you agree?
Right.
Because industrial doesn't generally have customers coming. You know, I guess the cabinet shop or some situation might be the most, but even so, I think that's more of a commercial thing.
Yeah.
You can say in C one zoning district or whatever. Um, so there reciprocal access between adjacent commercial projects, and I don't know if we need, well, I guess in situations where you may not have a frontage road in industrial area, um, I can't think of any.
Um, in this, in this sentence.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in time to think back to our industrial and commercial, isn't there then required some sort of screening between the two of them?
Uh, between the two types of uses?
Yeah. Don't we have?
Uh, if you're, yeah, if one is a higher quality material, I don't think you have to screen adjacent to a commercial.
I know, that's the question right there.
Well, anyway, um, well, this is talking about access.
But that's where I'm, that's where I'm questioning, that if, if it's limited space, typically, you know, one of them, one of them might be there before the other and there's already screening. So it's just, that's where I was like, how does this, how does this correlate with that when there's minimum space or difficult, you know?
Oh, I see what you're saying, if it, if you have a commercial next to an industrial, do you want to connect them?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I'm thinking the connecting is really the most important for commercial areas, unless you've got a situation, um, in industrial area where it's, where you don't have the frontage road possibility. Because um, yeah, industrial uses aren't typically related. You know, you're not running from one to the next, um, you're not stopping to pick up a pizza and then run into Walgreens or whatever.
Yeah. Okay, that's what my question was.
Um, so that, any other thoughts for the evening, and then I will focus on revamping the landscaping section. It is a challenge to, um, yeah, make it a very specific ordinance requirement versus more of a guideline, because most cities that are super serious uh, about their architecture have a separate document that is more of a guideline. But, um, yeah, we're gonna keep plugging away and.
Did you want to say anything about the upcoming projects?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Well, as of now, we for sure have the Woodhaven Flat on the agenda for next month, and we're waiting for the street issues to be resolved, uh, up at the CST site before we allow their second phase to come through. So that's yet to be determined. But they're working with Shane's office on that. They're, they're, uh, didn't pass the inspections for sub base. Uh, so they wouldn't let them pave yet. Uh, so we'll see what happens here in the next week or two.
Okay, is that all of it?
That is all I know of for next month, yes.
Okay, well, we have the last motion for the evening, if someone would like to make it.
I'll make a motion.
One second. Commissioner Burrow made motion. Second by Mr. Jurgis, all papers say aye.
Thanks for all the.